So let's go ahead and call to order the January 10th. Nope, we're not on there yet. There we go. Let's go ahead and call to order the first Oakdale City Council meeting of the year, January 10th, 2023. Sarah, will you take the role?
Councilmember Morecambe.
Here.
Councilmember Ingrithson.
Here.
Councilmember Olson.
Here.
Mayor Zabel.
Here. At this time, I'd like to invite everybody to stand if you are able and join us in the presentation of the colors and the Pledge of Allegiance from Local Scout Troop 580.
Color guard, attention. Color guard, advance. Please remove all nonreligious headgear. Please recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Post the colors. Color guard dismiss. You may all be seated.
I want to thank Scout Troop 580 for joining us tonight. It's always nice to have them here joining us. Now's the fun part. We get to do it every two years. We get to swear on our new elected officials. We're going to do it a little different this year. We're going to do it up here behind where I'm standing. And we'll save picture-taking opportunities with family and friends until after our meeting. It's a pretty short agenda, so anybody that wants to stick around, please feel free to do so. We also have cookies over there, so please help yourself after the meeting. With that, we're going to go ahead with the oath of office for mayor. If we can move our chairs.
Okay, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Kevin Zabel.
I, Kevin Zabel.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
The Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And the ordinances of the city of Oakdale.
And the ordinances of the city of Oakdale.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties of office of mayor for the city of Oakdale.
Discharge the duties of the office of mayor for the city of Oakdale.
For the term for which I have been elected.
For the term of which I've been elected.
To the best of my judgment and ability, so help me God.
To the best judgment, or to my best judgment and ability, so help me God.
Congratulations, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Okay. So next, we're going to swear on Andy Morecambe as a council member. Ready? Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Andy Morecambe.
I, Andy Morecambe.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And the ordinances of the city of Oakdale.
And the ordinances of the city of Oakdale.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of office of council member.
Of office, of the office of council member.
For the city of Oakdale.
For the city of Oakdale.
For the term for which I have been elected.
For the term for which I have been elected.
To the best of my judgment and ability, so help me God.
To the best of my judgment and ability, so help me God.
Congratulations, council member. Okay. I remember I give this as already a council member. Yes. Okay. So, councilmember Olson, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Susan Olson.
I, Susan Olson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
This is one that gets me. That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
The Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And the ordinances of the city of Oakdale.
And the ordinances of the city of Oakdale.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of the office of council member for the city of Oakdale.
Of the office of council member for the city of Oakdale.
For the term for which I have been elected.
For the term for which I have been elected.
To the best of my judgment and ability, so help me God.
To the best of my judgment and ability, so help me God.
Congratulations, council.
You know, I make that joke about team hug, but that's the only way that anything around here gets done, is we have one hell of a team, excuse my language, from the elected officials and our staff. I mean, none of this happens without our staff. And so I know I speak on behalf of my colleagues and I thank them. I thank the residents for putting their trust in us and sending us here, and we have a lot of work to do, so let's get at it. First item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Are there any changes?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, there is agenda item consensus "I." I'd request that we pull off. There's also been a modification to it, removing one of the applicant's Blake Schmidt, Schmidt, excuse me.
Okay. I think we'll tackle that, pulling that off during consensus motions, but other than that, I don't think there are any changes, right?
Right.
Cool. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Still moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Having a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Agenda is adopted. Next up is the approval of the minutes. First up, we have the workshop minutes from December 13th, 2022. Are there any changes? Can I have a motion?
Still moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Those are approved. Next up, we have regular meeting minutes from December 13th, 2022. Any changes? Seeing none, I'll look for a motion.
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Those are approved. Finally, the minutes from the special meeting December 20th, 2022. Any changes? Seeing none, I'll accept a motion.
Still moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And those are approved as well.
Kevin, I abstain from that vote.
Oh, okay, not a problem.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. Next up are introductions. This is a fun time to recognize some special guests in the audience. I'd like to take an opportunity to recognize Scout Troop 580. We've had them here before, so it's always nice when they come visit us. I think we'd like to take an opportunity to invite them to come up to the microphone and just tell us your name and your age and rank. Are they all the same?
Yeah.
Or different?
Different ranks, but that'd be a good thing to do.
Perfect, and I will come down there because we have a small gift for you as well. So if you guys want to form a line behind the podium.
All right, step on up, me, me, rank.
Hello, I am Carter Rucci, age 14, star rank.
Fantastic. Thank you for being here, we have a pin for you.
My name is Lucas Lee, I'm 14, and I am first class, I believe.
I'm sure, make up any class you want.
My name is Ivy Morecambe, I'm 11, and my rank is tenderfoot.
Welcome, Ivy. There you go.
Hello, my name is Cameron Moon, I'm 15, and my rank is second class.
Welcome. Thank you for being here.
Hello, I'm Ian Morecambe, and my rank is life, and I'm 15.
Hi, I'm Liam Schmidt, and I'm tenderfoot rank.
I am Odin Jensen, age 12, I am tenderfoot.
My name is Joseph Schmidt, age 14, and my rank is, I don't know.
My name is Aguilera Westenoff, I'm age 11, and I'm rank tenderfoot.
My name is Logan Gurline, and I'm scout.
My name is Colton Beek, and I'm 11, and I'm scout rank.
My name is Austin Schomberger, I'm 11, and I'm tenderfoot.
Well, I never was a scout, but I know a lot of people that have been, and I am fairly confident that a future mayor of Oakdale is sitting in the audience right now. So their commitment to the community is always very impressive. So thank you for being here, thank you for presenting the colors and leading us in the pledge tonight. Next up on the agenda is open forum. This is an opportunity for people to come to the podium and share what is, whatever is on their mind. This can be interesting. The process we typically follow is we ask people to try and keep their comments to three minutes. If a speaker in front of you says something similar to how you're feeling, it's totally okay to just say you agree with their position. This typically isn't a period for conversation back and forth with the council, but if there is something we need to have staff follow up on, we will hand your concerns or questions or comments over to them. So if anybody would like to step up and share anything, please feel free to do so. All these people and nothing?
They didn't tell us to present anything. We didn't plan to ask.
We're doing a good job. With that, we're going to go ahead and close open forum and keep things moving to the consensus motions. Consensus motions tend to be non-controversial items that the council will act on altogether. So looking to my council colleagues, are there any other than item "I" that we had already discussed about removing? Are there any others that council members would like to remove for individual consideration? Seeing none, I'll look for a motion for A through H.
I will make a motion to approve consensus motions A through H as presented.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, any conversation? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And A through H are presented. Consensus motion "I" is, I'll tackle this one. It is approving the hire of temporary part-time ice rink attendants. One individual has been removed from consideration, so we will be striking Blake Schmidt's name from the RCA.
Smith.
Mine's a Schmidt.
Oh, I wrote Smith, I'm sorry.
First night, Jake, first night, come on. And I believe councilmember Morecambe is going to say something here.
Yeah, from this vote, I need to formally recuse myself because the applicant is my daughter.
Always, always a wise thing. So with that, I would look for a motion to approve consensus motion "I" as amended.
Before I make that motion, I just want to clarify how I should word this motion. Should I, because we're just, we just have one name, should I specifically state the name, or?
I think it's amended to only have one name now, so you can just say consensus motion "I" as amended.
Okay. I make a motion to approve consensus motion "I" as amended.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion is approved. Next up on the agenda is hearing from our advisory boards and commissions. All council members have liaison assignments with our city commissions, so this is an opportunity for the liaisons to update everybody else on what our commissions are working on. So up first is the Economic Development Commission, which councilmember Olson is the liaison. It doesn't look like they had a meeting, so.
They did not.
All right. Next is our Environmental Management Commission, which met last night, and I'm the liaison. What did they work on? Oh, they're working on their content calendar for 2023, so working on how to get information about our environmental endeavors out to our residents. So they have a lot of work in that area, and so they're working very hard on it. Planning Commission up next, councilmember Ingrithson.
The Planning Commission did meet on January 5th, and I'm also, I draw a blank on what they discussed, but I am looking it up here.
I think it's those development items that we're going to be talking about next.
Oh, okay, thank you. I was at the meeting too, by the way. I'm just, I've drawn a blank, so I did look it up again today and looked at it, but I'm sorry.
No problem. Parks and Rec Commission, councilmember Morecambe.
Yep, they did not meet, and I have just been assigned to that commission, so I'm excited to serve with them, but at this point, I have no report.
Perfect. Finally is the Tree Board, they did not meet as well. Under the section of a ward of bid, staff doesn't have any for us tonight, so that's great. Staff reports, Community Development, City Planner, Luke McClanahan.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, yes. If we can bring up the screen here, we got a development application, it's actually two site plans. Give it just a moment here for the screen.
Okay, thank you. So yes, this location, the location of the request is at the northwest quadrant of 34th Street and High Point Drive. It's loc, the site is located in the Forefront Technology Business Campus, and it's also located within the 3M Imation Plan Unit Development, that's the zoning for this property. This is a vacant parcel consisting of 8.5 acres, and the purpose of the two-site plans, again, it's two-site plans for the same property, is to enable future commercial development of the site. So site plan option one would feature a grocery store along with other commercial uses, and then site plan option two is the backup plan in the event that a grocery store, the negotiation with the grocery store chain does not pan out. So a little bit of background of the site, it was re-guided per the comp plan from business campus to commercial use in summer of 2022, and then for the zoning, the PUD was amended to allow for certain commercial and retail uses also last summer. So here's a look at site plan option one. So you can see there are six commercial buildings here, the white buildings, and then in the northwest portion of this property is a, is the National Grocery Chain, and other uses of the site would include restaurants, a coffee shop, a pharmacy, a bank, and other general retail uses. Just a few highlights about the site plan and the design and requirements. A traffic analysis was submitted as part of this request, and they recommend a new, a left-turn lane off High Point Drive to serve this property, and then a couple turn lanes for the site access as you would approach High Point Drive. So there are three accesses here, one here on High Point, and then High Point would be extended as a private drive, there'd be another access on the north side, and then a new access on this new road, which is Hayward Avenue. For stormwater provisions, there are several basins that will serve this site, landscaping, site lighting, trash enclosures, those requirements of the code have been met for the site, and there will be some pylon signs, or a pylon sign at the southwest corner of the site. For sidewalks, there will be a new sidewalk that parallels High Point Drive as well as a sidewalk system internally to the site. So this request, option one, it does meet site plan standards subject to the conditions that are listed in the resolution. So moving on to site plan option two, as you can see, in place of the National Grocery Chain, National Grocery Store, if that negotiation does not pan out, then the applicant is prepared with this other site plan that features seven commercial buildings, so two commercial buildings in the place of the grocery store. Notably, in the northwest corner here is a proposed car wash, and as the underlying zoning for this PUD is commercial, staff finds that the car wash would be subject to a conditional use permit, so a separate approval process and review process to ensure that that use is compatible with this area and that certain conditions could be placed on it if it's deemed appropriate. Otherwise, the remainder of the site would be essentially the same as option one. So like option, the site plan option one, this site plan option two appears to meet the standards subject to certain conditions listed in the resolution. Moving on to some renderings of the site, it's just a few selected renderings of the proposed commercial buildings. So in the top left here is the, what the grocery store could look like, and then in the center here is a restaurant, upper right-hand corner is a pharmacy, bottom left is a coffee shop, and then in the bottom right is a bank. For exterior building materials and design, the applicant will just need to submit architectural plans when they're ready for the, to proceed with the building permits. So with that, staff recommends approval of both requests subject to the conditions in the resolutions in the packet, and I will summarize those. So for resolution number one, the developer pay for, pay the cost of the improvements for High Point Drive North as noted in the traffic analysis. Number two, the developer construct a sidewalk from High Point Drive, the cul-de-sac, to the intersection of 34th Street, as well as traffic signal improvements at High Point and 34th Street, and this language is in the Site Improvement Performance Agreement. Number three, the developer establish an easement over the sidewalk along High Point Drive North to allow for public use. And would like to note that if the sidewalk, there's a question from the applicant, that if the sidewalk is actually fully located within the right-of-way, or if it's covered by an existing access agreement, then this provision would simply not apply. Number four, architectural plans be submitted with a building permit. Number five, approval of a development agreement. Number six, all ground, mechanical equipment must be properly screened. Number seven, permits and approvals be obtained from the Valley Branch Watershed District. Number eight, the developer obtain approval from the city's fire marshal for the proposed hydrant locations. And number nine, approval of the site civil construction plans by the city engineer. Moving on to the resolution for site plan option two, they're exactly the same with one exception, and that's the first condition, and that's a conditional use permit be obtained to construct a car wash on the property. So Planning Commission, they did review these two site plans and they recommended approval. And I know that there are concerns from the council about the car wash use, the developer is here for any questions, otherwise staff is here as well for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Luke. Councilmembers, any questions for Luke Raft? No? Any questions for the developer? Seeing none, okay. Let's go ahead and jump in to that first resolution on the agenda.
I'll make a motion to waive reading and adopt resolution 2023-05, approving site plan option one for the forefront commercial retail property with conditions included in the attached resolution.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Hearing a motion and a second, any additional conversation? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And that resolution is adopted. In regards to the resolution for option number two, in talking with staff, and I believe they've also spoke with the developer, we're going to move to take no action on that resolution at this time. So I will go ahead and make the motion to table, or not to table, oh, Chris almost freaked out again. I will make the motion to move to take no action on resolution 2023-06 at this time. There's a motion, can I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any conversation? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And that motion is approved to take no action at this time. Okay, Chris isn't throwing anything at me, so we're good. All right.
Okay.
Now is our time to check in with the city attorney, Jim Thompson. Jim, welcome, anything for us?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, nothing specific to report tonight, but happy to answer questions.
Any questions for Jim? All right. Administrators report, Christina Volkers.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. Attached to your agenda is a proposed legislative agenda. It is good practice for cities to discuss and debate on what the priorities should be for this current legislative session and to do that annually. We did discuss this at the December 13th council workshop, and attached to your agenda are the priorities, the proposed priorities. We did discuss most of them, there's one added, the noise wall, and the noise wall is something our residents along 694, along the 694 corridor has been, have been asking for support of a new noise wall there, and while the city isn't in a position to fund that, we certainly are in a position to support funding for that. So that has been added to the proposed legislative priorities, that would be the only significant change based on the discussion at the December 13th meeting, so I'll be glad to stand for any questions, otherwise I would ask for a motion to approve it.
Anybody have any questions for Chris? And I just want to make one clarification, you sort of referenced it, so these are legislative priorities at the state level for the state legislature.
Yes, thank you.
Yep. Perfect. Any, no questions for Chris? I will look for a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the 2023 legislative agenda as presented.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any final comments? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And that is adopted.
Thank you.
Next up, I guess I'll take this one. Yeah, I guess I will. Next up on the agenda is to make our appointments for city council members to be liaisons to our city commissions. We had mentioned that briefly before, this is just the official action for that, as well as, as required by state law and city policy, we have to designate an acting mayor in case I get hit by a bus or eaten by a bear. And after council discussion, it is to designate councilmember Ingrithson as acting mayor for 2023. Can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Read it out.
Read it out? All right. I will formally make a motion to designate councilmember Ingrithson as the acting mayor for 2023.
And council appointments.
And council appointments.
All right, there's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second, any final comments? No, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And those are adopted. I hope I don't get eaten by a bear. Oh, council presentations. Also in this section is just an opportunity for individual council members to share any comments or thoughts that they have, any comments we've received from residents, so who wants to go first?
Nothing, nothing from me.
Councilmember Ingrithson.
I have nothing.
I'll just share, as my first meeting here, it's an honor to be elected, and this is the most people I've seen at a council meeting in the past year, and I've been coming to every council meeting since I decided to run. So as you can see, the things that are presented affect our community, they're important, and they need feedback, so I would just encourage everybody who can come to meetings, get involved, and reach out.
Thanks, Andy. I have a few, which is great because staff always writes them up for me. There's an indoor market, the indoor winter markets at the Discovery Center this Saturday, January 21st, 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. There's over 20 local vendors selling a wide array of baked goods, sweets, salsas, jewelry, essential oils, and more. So always a really, really good time up there, feel free to pop on up and buy a few things. We have a groundbreaking at the Espin residences on Tuesday, January 24th. It is a 190-unit apartment property as part of the Willowbrook Development. So for any residents who've seen that new commercial industrial building going up on the corner of 694 and County 14, it's just north of that. So I'll be out there, I think some of my colleagues might be out there, breaking ground, frozen ground on that really nice apartment building. So next is congratulations to our fall photo contest winners, voting concluded at the end of 2022, and the three photos that received the most votes on the city's Facebook page were Tree Details by Kaylee Johnston, Sunset by Kelly Marie List, and Reflections by Tim Kemper. If anybody wants to see those photos, they're on the city's Facebook page and website. Comms manager Lori Polkbeck's nodding, so, but thank you to all of the residents who made submissions, thank you to all of the residents who voted, there were a lot of really good photos this year, so we are appreciative of that. Oakdale Public Works is still offering their Christmas tree recycling to residents through the end of the month, so if you have a crispy brown tree by now in your living room, you can go ahead and take it to the Public Works campus, $3 per tree, and they will go ahead and recycle that for you, no decorations or bags are allowed, but please feel free to stop by the Public Works campus Monday through Friday, 7:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., 1900 Hadley Avenue North. City offices and facilities will be closed on Monday, January 16th in observance of Martin Luther King Day, so just a reminder of that, that'll be next week. Last one, I am adding, a plea to our residents with all of these snowfalls. With all of the snowfall, we really need some help digging out fire hydrants. There was a really nice news story, I believe on KAR 11 last night, that interviewed a fire commander out of Minneapolis who was actually responding to a house fire. Every few seconds matters a lot, so any efforts our residents can, or any help our residents can give us in digging out those fire hydrants can save some very valuable time. I think our city has over 500 fire hydrants, so we try and clear them as fast as we can, but you don't know when a fire will pop up, and those seconds and minutes really matter. So if you can give us a hand or your neighbors a hand, we would really appreciate it. I think they asked for three feet on, all the way around, so that'll give the fire department plenty of access to, to access that hydrant. With that, that's all I got. Last up on the agenda is claims. Claims are the bills. We gotta pay the bills. So included in our packets were the claims rosters. Councilmembers have had a chance to review that, so I will look for a motion on the claims rosters.
I'll make a motion to approve claims as presented.
There is a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any conversation? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? Nobody? All right, claims are paid. Last item, motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
There is a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, nobody ever is, and we are adjourned. For everybody here, we're gonna take some family.